That was a score, by the way.
That was a means I can't.
That was a score.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. The agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. You may also follow along by connecting to the district's website. Click on the district link, then select the Board of Education, then Board Doc's Agenda, and select This Evening's Meeting. There will be one opportunity to address the board this evening, the first being -- excuse me, there will be two opportunities. The first being Agenda Item 4.01. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 5.01 through 13.01. Please state the agenda item you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. There is a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. Mr. Griffith, with that, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Cotter, Mrs. Davidson.
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Here.
Mr. Velardo.
Here.
Mr. Byrd.
Here.
Will you please stand and join us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just to let you know, earlier this week, we were able to swear in our newest board member, Jerry Cotter. We knew she was unable to join us this evening. And tonight, Dr. Nancy Nestor Baker will swear in Mr. Richard Byrd.
Richard, if you'll raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Richard Byrd.
I, Richard Byrd.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
As board member in and for the said Westerville City School District.
As the board member in and for the said Westerville City School District.
Franklin and Delaware Counties, Ohio.
Franklin and Delaware Counties, Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted.
In accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
And until my successor is chosen and qualified.
And until my successor is chosen and qualified.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Byrd.
It's good to be back. Good to be back.
At this time, I would like to ask for a motion and a second for nominations for Office of President. So moved.
Second. You want -- we need a nomination for --
We need a name.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was a --
Well, I did my part right. I nominate Richard Byrd to serve as president for this year. Thank you. Are there other nominations or a second?
I second.
Okay. Hearing no other nominations, a motion to close nominations Office of the President, Board of Education for 2016. Is there a motion to close nominations for president?
Motion to close?
And a second? Second.
Who second? Richard?
Richard seconded.
So now we need a roll call.
And now?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
With a motion from Dr. Nancy Nestor Baker and a second by Mr. Byrd to elect Mr. Byrd for Office of President of Board of Education 2016, Mr. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Byrd.
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Byrd.
Let's change seats.
You have to call for a --
Yeah, we have --
That's all they ever do, go for vice. After you come over here, you do every board I've ever done does that. You will call for a --
Do you have the sheet there?
No, just so I can read off of it. I didn't come prepared.
No, that's all it is. Newly elected president, 2016 will preside on the election. So you're --
We skip that.
I appreciate the patience as we get through the beginnings of this year. And like I said before, we're a little rusty, but we'll get things moving along here. At this time, I need to call for a motion for the nomination of the Office of Vice President. Do I have a motion and a name?
I'm -- go ahead. I nominate Rick Velardo to serve as Vice President again for 2016.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Hearing no other nominations, I would seek a nomination to close nominations for Vice President.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Griffith, can we call the roll?
Yeah, I gotta catch up here. Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Byrd.
Yes.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate it. And I'll save comments as we get to board comments at the end of the evening, get right into the agenda for tonight's session. We'll move to Agenda Item 5.01. We do not require the approval of minutes, however, we do ask if there are questions, revisions, or updates of board members.
None.
And hearing none, the minutes are accepted. And our next agenda item will be School Board Recognition. And Dr. Kellogg, do you have this?
Sure do, Mr. President, Byrd. Thank you very much, and congratulations, Mr. Byrd and Mr. Velardo, on your election and swearing in back to office, and to Mrs. Cotter for swearing in, which she will see with us tonight. But it's nice to have a full intact board with leadership set. There was a moment there of uncertainty that we had to deal with, and I feel confident as we move forward. As you may know, January is School Board Recognition Month, and we'd like to take the opportunity, Mr. Griffith and I and the staff, to recognize the work of our board. And I'm going to read a proclamation that comes from the Ohio School Boards Association. Of course, as good school board -- as Ohio School Boards does annually, they recognize it with a slogan, as you can see this year, "A Work of Heart," which I think, particularly with our board, and having worked with you, as I have, the last few months, few years, I know everything you do, the decisions come from the mind, but a lot of it comes from the heart, in terms of what you think about and what's important to you. So, "The Ohio School Boards Association is celebrating School Board Recognition Month in January 2016 to build awareness and understanding of the vital function an elected board of education plays in our society. School Board Recognition Month honors the members of Ohio's more than 700 city, exempted village, local, and joint vocational boards of education and educational service centers, governing boards for their commitment to providing quality public education to Ohio's schoolchildren. The Westerville City School District is joining with other districts throughout the state to recognize the important contributions school board members make to their communities. Ohioans benefit every day from the dedicated energies and countless hours devoted by a group of more than 3,400 men and women across the state. These public servants are elected to serve by local citizens and receive little compensation for their tireless efforts. These men and women are the local school board members of Ohio. These people unselfishly contribute their time and talents toward the advancement of public education. They represent a continuing commitment to local citizen control and decision-making in education. Even though we're making a special effort during January to show appreciation to our school board members, we recognize their contributions reflect a year-round commitment on their part. They are dedicated individuals who are committed to the continuing success of our schools and our students." As we take an opportunity to recognize the board members that are here with us this evening, of course, Jerry Cotter, who's been newly elected and sworn in. And I'll also like to take a moment. In my two-and-a-half-years tenure here, of course, the board that hired me is different than the board I'm working with now, and there's a lineage there for me that I'd like to thank, including Dr. Carol French, who recently retired from the board, Kristi Robbins, who was on the board that hired me, Kevin Hoffman, who was on the board that hired me, and Cindy Crowe, who was on the board that hired me. All of those people served from the heart and found and were very influential in my transition into this role, and I thank them. And I think, real quickly, off the top of my head, of the wonderful opportunities this board has created for students and for our community in the time period that we've been working together. Little things come to mind, like Point View Elementary, that opportunity we created there, the Walnut Springs Media Center. I think of all-day kindergarten. I think of pay-to-participate fees. I think of reduced instructional fees we've done for families. I think of our work with class sizes and examining class sizes. I think of some of the work we're doing with our music and fine arts teachers today as we look at additional staffing there. I think about the conversation we're gonna have about transportation this evening and the opportunities we're gonna create there. And just countless other pieces, from pathways models to Fab Labs. And in just those two-and-a-half years, the opportunities the board has made for kids and for families have been outstanding. And at the same time, doing that with a measure of looking very carefully at our financial resources and keeping us on track for maintaining our community's support and maintaining our financial situation long-term. And that's a wonderful, wonderful commitment. So I thank you for your leadership. I thank you for your support. Mr. Griffith, if you want to make comments, you can at this time, or Cat's got his tongue. I've spoken for him. And as usual, I've done all the talking, he's done all the hard work. I would like to, I think it's on the agenda this time, offer an opportunity for Mayor of City of Westerville, Kathy Kuczy, to come forward to recognize the board as well.
Good evening, members of the board. Whereas it is one of the responsibilities of the mayor of the City of Westerville to recognize occasions of outstanding significance, and whereas it shall be the mission of the Westerville City School District to provide all students with the best possible education, and whereas the school board sets the direction for our community's public schools by envisioning the community's education future, and whereas the school board sets policies and procedures to govern all aspects of school operation, and whereas the school board keeps attention focused on progress toward the school district's goals and maintains a two-way communications loop with all segments of the community, and whereas serving on a school board requires an unselfish devotion of time and service to carry on the mission and business of the school district, and whereas the school board must respond on behalf of the community to the educational needs of our students, and whereas the school board voluntarily accepts the above-mentioned responsibilities, now therefore I, Kathleen Kuczy, Mayor of the City of Westerville, Ohio, do hereby proclaim January 2016 as School Board Recognition Month in Westerville and encourage all citizens to publicly and privately thank the school board members in our school district for their dedicated service to our children. Do you accept this?
And I have -- go ahead.
We also have a little certificate for each board member, so I'm gonna call your name up, and if you come up, we can get another photo.
Oh, jeez. I did not dress for photos.
You look nice, the red one's good.
Yeah, giant plaid, it's always great for photos.
Mr. Velardo?
The red pop.
I did not consider.
Mrs. Davidson? I'm going for president. Thank you for your leadership. Miss Nancy Nestor Baker?
Yes.
I know better. It's one thing to be on once, it's another thing to come back and do again. Thank you very much. Thank you each.
Well, thank you, everyone. It's -- I don't know about my other fellow board members, but getting awards for serving on the board always seems kind of odd. We do this because we love it, and each one of us has our areas of focus and is what we enjoy, so -- but thank you very much for the recognition, and thank you, America Kuczy, much appreciated. We move on to Agenda Item 7.01, update on transportation from discussions from our previous meeting in December.
Thank you, President Byrd. Just a quick update. Back in September, we did a presentation on current state of transportation, mostly looking at the non-transportation boundaries. And after that discussion with the board, we've gone back, and it was our -- our goal from that meeting is to bring forward to the board an opportunity to put the transportation boundaries back to pre-2012 levels. So the game plan is the following. At our next board meeting, the board will have a resolution in front of it to purchase additional buses. These will be new buses we'll need in order to expand routes back to the pre-2012 levels. Those buses were already in the five-year forecast in the capital, so it won't affect the five-year forecast at all. We will start this spring recruiting drivers for the additional routes, and we'll have to increase our pool of substitute drivers as well, additional routes, additional substitutes. So we're putting that piece in place. And then the next action by the board in regard to this will be in August, is when you annually approve the transportation bus stops and routes. So that will be the second action you'll take, and that will put it all in place. Two things to just present caution on. One is, this is additional expenditures for salaries that are gonna stretch us a little bit, but I think it's a worthwhile endeavor. It's a piece that we hear from the community a great deal. It's a safety concern, it's an access-to-school concern. For families, this is a hot-button issue, and I think this is the right move. The other one is, the -- in today's economic climate, and this is not unique to Westerville, it's not unique to central Ohio, it's kind of nationwide, it's really difficult to find bus drivers to fill those jobs. And so we're going to be working very aggressively to do that. We had our job fair just last week that our HR department put on, which bought forward people for positions, but it's gonna take a little bit of elbow grease to fill these jobs. So if you know someone out there who'd like a job where they spend their day with their back turned to about 45 youngsters, just let us know. So we're excited. So as a -- what that means is, the transportation boundaries will look up exactly like they did prior to them being scaled back in 2012. That information will come forth, and we'll be in good stead again. So I'm excited about that opportunity. It's one of those pieces that I think is really important to our families, some of these young people. It's a long haul, two miles for the little legs, so. Any questions regarding where we're going?
Just, you might want to not get involved in marketing those positions.
I see about taking one.
But no, I agree, this is a huge step forward for us. It's one of those infrastructure pieces that's really important, and you're right, it's been a huge hot-button issue, very large concern coming out of a number of neighborhoods, and a lot of concerns for people who don't even have children in school as they watch the lines, the children crossing, and so forth. This is something that very much needs to be done. I'm glad we're moving ahead with it.
The secondary benefit to folks who may not have school-aged children is that some of those congestion areas early in the morning, as parents are driving their kids to school, might reduce now that our buses are back on the road, and more parents will put kids on buses and drive fewer kids. So that might be a secondary benefit to some folks.
Any additional questions or comments? All right, if not, we will move to Agenda Item 8.01, public comments relative to agenda items. We have one speaker this evening, Mr. Buwan Payer Correll. Just as a reminder, public comment at this point in the agenda will be restricted to items on the agenda only. Each person shall be allotted five minutes to make comments or remarks at this time. And at the board's president's discretion, the amount of time allocated to this public comment section may be limited. Please come forward.
I have a general one, not this at the time. Can I say at the end?
Yeah, we can take you at the next agenda topic, or the next comment section topic at the end. Yep. Excellent. Having no additional comments, we can move to Agenda Item 9.01, resolution to approve requests from the treasurer. So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Go ahead, Bart.
All right. Mr. President, members of the board, this is the financial section. We have several motions we'll have to go through, but this is sort of the general operating standards that you give me permission to do every year. So these are kind of things that have been here every year, but just to read what these are, in case people don't know what they are, just go through and briefly mention these. You're giving me authority to purchase necessary services, materials, and make payments of bills and salaries when due within the limits of the appropriation resolution, to transfer outstanding stale-dated checks to the general fund, execute all contracts in the normal course of the business within appropriated amounts, advance funds from the general fund to other funds as needed to meet obligations, report these advances to the Board of Education, to invest interim in active funds at the most productive interest rate as they become available, sign all payroll checks, all general account checks, purchase orders and contracts with original mechanical or facsimile signature of the treasurer, request amended certificates of estimated resources from the Franklin County and Delaware County auditors as needed, request and execute on behalf of the Board of Education the advance of all taxes and funds as they may be available for distribution from Franklin County and Delaware, and those authorizations shall extend to any advances, including but not limited to weekly advances. Tax abatement notification be resolved pursuant to revised code, the tax commission notify the Board of Education of any applicable exemption from taxation, and the reading of the minutes, as we've talked about already, that the Board of Education dispense with the reading of the minutes of each regular special meeting, provided they are delivered to the board members at least two days prior. So that's what this motion is giving me authority to do.
Any questions or comments?
Yep.
If not, we'll call the roll.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Next agenda, we'll call for a motion for resolution to participate in state and federal-funded programs for fiscal year 2016.
Mr. President -- oh, need a motion, I'm sorry.
Need a motion.
Ha!
All right. I'm not on my game tonight, for example.
I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Mr. President, members of the board, this motion allows me to participate in state and federal-funded programs for fiscal year 16. I won't mention all these, but it's any state, local, federal grants. We have these listed throughout the year. If, for some reason, we add one, we'll have to come back and ask for approval, but these are the ones that we pretty much deal with every year. There may even be one on here that we don't deal with. This just gives me the authority to deal with them if we do get money that comes in later. So that's what this resolution is for.
Any questions? If we can call the roll.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Also, as part of financials, I know Mr. Velardo was gonna ask me a question, but --
Yes. Okay, now.
Go ahead.
What's really, it's -- as we think about, this has to do more with levy renewal language. And I wanted to talk to you about it in the financial section, I thought it made the most sense. As we talk about levy renewal over the next several months, there are some different terms that I want to -- I just want to make sure we are very specific on. And let me couch it this way, and you correct me if I'm wrong, or just tell me if I'm going down the right road. When we talk about the 10% rollback, that's for residential properties, it's non-business credit. And if a -- if this levy were to be renewed, that would remain in place, or 10% rollback. The second one is what's called the --
Mr. Velardo? The reason it would be, we still be part of it, is because this levy was, that we're currently in, was passed prior to the law change.
Okay.
So that's why, if you maintain it.
Yeah.
That's why. It was because we passed this levy prior to the law change.
So grandfathered in, kind of use that phrase sometimes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The second one is what is called the 2.5% reduction. Sometimes people lump those together and say 12.5%, but they're really different. It's 2.5% reduction. Owning and occupying your home as your primary residence.
Correct.
It's even called the owner occupancy credit on the Franklin County Auditor's website. If this renewal were to move forward, pass, that too would be grandfathered in.
Correct.
Okay. The one where I think we get stuck, and I just want to make sure we're clear, there's also something called the homestead exemption. And that's for people 65 years or older. There's also a disability, permanent disability piece in there. Then there's an income cap, I think, of $31,500.
Correct.
The only reason I'm bringing this up at this point, it's in the financials, so that is not impacted at all.
Correct. Has nothing to do with the renewal of the levy.
Thank you. I just wanted to get it on record, because I've had people say, question, "Well, that's not got anything to do with it." Sometimes we talk about it. It sounds like the first two directly tied to the levy, if it passed, kind of grandfathered in. It's just my way of saying it. The homestead exemption, you have it regardless of what happens.
Correct.
Okay, that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Helping me clear that up.
And also, in the lines of financial, it was brought to me by a person in the audience. You know, the lottery's up to 1.3 billion, 1.4. Okay, I will buy a ticket, I'll be honest with you, I'll buy a ticket. But just so you know, I guess it's been explained out there, that all this money will go to the schools. It may go to the schools, but it's not extra money. That's already in the budgets. So when they try to sell the lottery tickets, say, "All this money's going to the schools," it may, but keep in mind, they took the amount of money that the budget brings in for the lottery, and then moved whatever that budget was, same equivalent dollar, out. So it doesn't mean it's gonna be additional. Well, schools are gonna get it, most of it, eventually. And keep in mind, this is, I think, a four or five-county lottery as well, so they have to split it. But when they say this lottery money will go to the schools, it will, but just remember, whatever that dollar figure is, they usually take that amount and move it out somewhere else. So just keep in mind if you hear that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. And I think those two issues kind of go together. Words and language matters.
Yes, and I will tell you, I've always used the term "homestead rollback." When I talk to other treasurers, we've always -- that's our term, because we knew the homestead exemption really didn't -- it wasn't a term we dealt with that much.
Right.
So I've even said "homestead rollback" in some of my presentations. So what I'll do is, next time I do the five-year forecast, we'll make sure I clarify that.
Separate that. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think the best part of that dialogue was Bart predicting that somebody up here is going to win the power of all.
No, I said me.
Oh, okay. I didn't know you were singling yourself out. I thought you just narrowed the field down to all of us. So, excellent. With that, we will move on to Agenda Category 10, recommended action, old business. I would make a --
So, when they try to sell the lottery tickets, say, all this money's going to the schools, it may, but keep in mind, they took the amount of money that the budget brings in for the lottery, and then moved whatever that budget was, same equivalent dollar, out, so it doesn't mean it's going to be additional. Well, schools are going to get it, most of it, eventually, and keep in mind, this is, I think, a four or five-county lottery as well, so they have to split it. But when they say this lottery money will go to the schools, it will, but just remember, whatever that dollar figure is, they usually take that amount and move it out somewhere else, so just keep in mind if you hear that.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for clarifying that. I, I think those two issues kind of go together. Words and language matters.
Yes, and I will tell you, I've always used the term homestead rollback, when I talk to the treasures, we've always, that's our term, because we knew that the homestead exemption really didn't, wasn't a term we dealt with that much.
Right.
So, I've even said homestead rollback in some of my presentations, so what I'll do is, next time I do the five-year forecast, we'll make sure I clarify that.
Separate that, awesome, thank you, thank you very much.
I think, I think the best part of that dialogue was Bart predicting that somebody up here is going to win the Powerball.
No, I said me.
Oh, okay.
I buy the ticket.
I didn't know you were singling yourself out, I thought you just narrowed the field down to all of us, so, excellent. With that, we will move on to agenda category 10, recommended action on business. I would make a request barring any requirements to explore any of these items that we bundle, 10.01 through 10.09, all final readings. If there is no objection to that, I will briefly state what these curriculum are. Any objections? Okay, if not, the final readings that we will be taking action on this evening would be the revision and renaming of Algebra III, Honors Algebra III, the final reading Math Lab for Algebra MA 101, and Geometry MA 102, final reading High School Music Revised Courses Study, final reading addition of Intro to Engineering Design Course of Study, following reading addition of Business Law I and II Courses of Study, final reading addition of Personal Finance Course of Study, final reading addition of English 1000, or 1100, Composition 1, and English 2367, Composition 2, and the final reading of Revision of Strategic Reading Course and Study Materials, and a final reading of the addition of Health Pathway College Credit Plus Courses of Study, and all of these materials had been reviewed previously in our board oversight. Yep, so I'll call for a motion for us to approve.
So moved.
Second.
If we can call the roll, if there are no comments or questions.
I do have a comment. It was brought to my attention that there is something pretty important in particularly the syllabi from Columbus State, and I want to preface this by reminding people that the Columbus State syllabi that we're talking about in the curriculum that we approve, that's offered through Columbus State, students who take those courses are expected to be held to the standards of the institution in which those courses belong. If you're taking Columbus State courses, you are expected to be held to those standards. If you're taking Ohio State, if you're taking Autobahn, if you're taking Capital, wherever you're taking those courses from, as a student in Westerville City Schools, your conduct, your performance, the expectations dovetail with that institution as well. And I think it's important to point out that coursework expectations for college classes can be significant, and it's good stuff, and it's important, and there are reasons for that, but the coursework expectation language in the Columbus State policy states that students at schools receiving funds from the state of Ohio should be expected to do 30 hours of work for each credit earned. That means students should expect to spend about two hours on work outside of class for each hour spent in class, and to be aware of their out-of-school responsibilities. Our kids who take these courses are used to carrying heavy schedules, they're used to carrying a lot of weight academically, socially, athletically, financially oftentimes as they have work schedules. But I do think it's important to reiterate that there are differences between the college courses that are offered in our schools and the high school courses that are offered, of course, within our schools, and they are both to be highly celebrated.
Any other comments? If not, if we can call the roll, please.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes. Moving to agenda item 11.01, appointing the board designee as public records official. I'm very excited about this one, because this means I'm no longer the public records official, so if I can have a motion, please.
I think it should be Jerry. Oh!
If I could have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
And just so you know, you're appointing me as the records director this year?
Oh, we all know that.
I see, I tried to get Dr., or Mr. Hersheiser to do it. I actually even printed up the agenda, so there's his name on it, and gave it to him.
Yeah, but the person needs to know how to read, so we can...
Oh, boy.
Ooh!
I'm so joking, Mark.
All right. Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes. All right, we move off to agenda item 11.02, the resolution to establish the 2016 Board of Education meeting calendar. If I could have a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
Any question, any questions or concerns, comments about the calendar as presented? If not, if we can call roll, please.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes. At this time, we move to public comments, and our first speaker will be Mr. Buwan Payer Correll. These comments come at the conclusion of our business agenda, and interested persons may comment on any subject, and each person shall be allotted five minutes to make comments or remarks at this time, with no restriction on the number of speakers.
Good evening, everyone, and board, member of the board. First of all, I'd like to thank you. My name is Buwan Payer Correll, I'm a parent. My daughter goes to Henby Elementary, and my son goes to Longfellow Elementary School. And I'm very thankful first, because I am the citizen of this country this past October. For the first time, I voted for my representative, and I call, I can call them as my representative, and this is my country. Thank you for doing that, thank you each and every one of the peoples present here. I'm a proud citizen of this country. Now, going back to my topic, the first thing, I'd like to thank Barbara for listening to me and my community for everything we come and ask you. Thank you personally and from the community. Because of your effort, I can tell that, and I can see my son going to full-time kindergarten. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I also like to thank Lucy, who is, I don't know, she's not here today, but please convey that, she is constantly in touch with the community, and she is working very hard to address the need of the community on a regular basis. So, we are very grateful and thankful for doing that. And in general, I'm also very thankful to all the schools, and particularly my school where my kids are going. So, having said this, I have few concerns in the school on an everyday basis. I told last year, I think on January last year, I spoke with Barbara, telling that the number of Bhutanese Nepali families are increasing Westerville City School, and I checked with Lucy last, four months before, and that has been true. That number is more than doubled than last year, and I can predict you today that this number will be going to triple very soon. This is a fact. And parent engagement in the Bhutanese Nepali community is absolutely a new concept. We come from refugee camps in Nepal, and prior to that, we were in Bhutan, where parent engagement is not a priority. We understand and we believe that a school is responsible for 99% of the education of a child. But here, in my opinion, it's my personal opinion, I believe that 60% of the child education lies in the parent's end, 40% in the school, or let's say 50/50, which is a new concept to the community. So, I would like to ask, and I would like to request, make some adjustment, and please help us to engage our families in the school system, so that our kids will be successful, and school and parents, school and family relation will be increased, which is not happening today. I can give you one or two examples, because of time factor. I come to most of the ESL meeting here in this building. Coming here, I find one or two parents, or sometimes none. It is not that parents are not interested, it is because it is not communicated. I don't want to blame the school, because whatever school knows, the same language has been used to communicate. It's a known fact, a majority of the staffs and the communicator in the school speak English, obvious, but majority of the family members speak Nepali. So, I would think that some way we should do to communicate the parents in the language they understand. In fact, I offered volunteer service last time, but my offer was declined because of the privacy policy of the school. So, I can offer still, or if that is not an option, I can also offer, I can also work for a minimum pay, it's not my choice, but if that is an adjustment that could be done, I am there, because my ultimate objective is to engage my parents, my family members in the school system for the success of our kids. That's number one thing. Number two, my son, who loves school so much, he had a doctor's appointment, and he was arguing with me that I want to go to school, he's of that attitude. Among those days, he loves the Friday the most. Do you know the reason? Because Friday is a meatless Friday. There is, he has an option to eat in the school, a school lunch. Other days, he has to bring a lunch from home, which I am very happy. I would request to make some kind of adjustment, to make a vegetarian option in the school, in terms of health, and also culturally appropriate address, because vegetarian food is always healthy, and WHO has proven that fact. So, these are the two concerns, I am bringing it, because my time's clicking down, I have a few more, but anyway. The third thing is that I am here to, as a parent, I 100% like to be involved in the school, I want some opportunities, I can do volunteer, because we need to call our parents, we need to provide some kind of adjustment, maybe the transportation, or maybe somehow or the other, to engage those parents, because this number is going to be multiplying, is increasing every single day, so that will be my request. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payer Correll, much appreciated. Our next speaker for the evening will be Peg Duffy.
Not really sure where to start, because so many things that were said, I would like to say thank you. Mr. Griffith said someone, guilty party in the audience, I was the guilty party who asked him to make the announcement about the Powerball. I was appalled last night when I saw one of the local news reporters standing there, holding up her lottery ticket, telling us how much money would go to the schools from this. Mr. Griffith explained it, as I recall, when I was active in League of Women Voters, and the excess lottery profits went into being. So, if you buy your lottery ticket, buy it for your personal reasons, not because you're doing anything good for the schools, quite frankly, because as Mr. Griffith explained, it's just a balance, a budget balancing thing. Mr. Velardo and Mr. Griffith, thank you for the explanation that the homestead is a totally separate animal. We had a, when it first went into place, it was on a sliding scale, and 25,000 was the maximum for the household income, and a lower percentage. Then we had a four-year period where if you were 65 years of age and qualified, didn't matter what your income was. And so, a lot of us got on on that. The new plan, the first Monday of this month, applications opened for those who are 65 or will turn 65 by the end of this year, applications close at the end of June. And they can apply, and what this means, the first $25,000 of your property is not considered for taxes. So, we always use the hypothetical 100,000, okay? If you have a $100,000 property and you have the homestead exemption, then you are considered 75,000. Incidentally, you may have the homestead exemption on your oversized house, that now that the kids are gone and you would like to downsize, the homestead exemption is portable. It doesn't go with the house, it goes with the people. So, thank you for all of those explanations. Dr. Nestor Baker? Yes, I taught courses at Columbus State, and what she clarified, you have no idea of people coming into college who think that they can get away with half an hour, that many of them did, they were not in the most rigorous academic courses when they were in high school, and they don't understand that it's a different animal. And so, pointing that out, and that is delineated in some...